The May 13th, 2025, meeting of the Marion County School Board, it is now called to order. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each day, I ask that we observe a moment of silence at this time. Please join me. Thank you. At this time, Ms. Thoreau, will you please read the board commitment statement?
Certainly, Madam Chair. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received to the board clerk no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each one are on a separate sheet. Good evening, Ms. Gonzalez. Please call the roll.
Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Ms. Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Shawn Martin, Donellen High School.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Gullett, who is going to share our inspiration and pledge this evening?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board. Great to see you tonight. I am pleased to have our very own Rookie Teacher of the Year for Marion County, Courtney Morris, here with us tonight. And she is going to be introduced, although she doesn't really need an introduction, I just did that, but from Ms. Magamal. And I want to thank Ms. Magamal for being here and all the work they do to support our teachers. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Conrad, School Board members, Superintendent Dr. Gullett. As a part of our Public Education Foundation's Golden Apple Teacher Recognition Program, we have the Rookie of the Year Award for teachers with less than four years' experience. And to be named Rookie of the Year for our district is a very competitive process, starting in September of each school year, through school-based nominations, which then continue on to teachers submitting portfolio work. They are interviewed by a selections committee, and then surprise classroom observations, all culminating in a district winner being named Rookie of the Year, receiving that coveted Golden Apple, and becoming a part of the prestigious Golden Apple Academy. I am proud to be welcoming our 2025 Rookie Teacher of the Year, Ms. Courtney Morris, from Stanton Weersdale Elementary.
Good evening, Dr. Gullett, School Board members and community members. It's truly an honor to stand before you tonight as Marion County's 2025 Rookie Teacher of the Year. If I had to sum up my journey with Marion County, both as a student and now as a teacher, it would be this: If you can dream it, you can achieve it. A proud product of this district, having attended Harborview Elementary, Lakewood Middle School, and Lakewood High School. My mother, a longtime Marion County educator, first inspired my dream to be a teacher. That dream took shape in high school through volunteer work tied to my IB diploma. I kept returning to the classroom even after graduation because I felt a deep sense of purpose and belonging. In 2017, I joined Stanton Weersdale Elementary School as a paraprofessional. From day one, I knew that I was home. I built strong connections with students and learned the power of simply being someone in their corner, something I once needed myself. With the support of our MESP union, I earned my AA degree debt-free and then pursued a bachelor's degree in elementary education at St. Leo University, made possible by the Public Education Foundation's Teacher-to-Be Scholarship. Later, I became the family engagement liaison, gaining insight to the vital roles families play in student success. My principal worked around my college schedule, and my colleagues became my biggest cheerleaders. One of the hardest parts of becoming a teacher is the unpaid final internship. But Marion County launched a paid internship program for employees, and that support changed everything. I completed my internship at Stan, the very place where my journey began. Today, I stand here not just as a teacher, but as proof of what happens when a district believes in its people. I'm grateful to the Public Education Foundation for programs like the Teacher-to-Be Scholarship, grants for great ideas, and tools for teachers. I've been inspired by the Golden Apple Academy, whose Apple Paper Scissors event empowers teachers to connect and grow. At Stanton, I dreamed of starting a video production club, and with the help of our administration and 21st Century funding, that dream became a reality. Today, over 70 students explore filming, editing, and acting. This year, we brought home 22 awards from Marion County's Media Festival, including a Best-of-Show. Teaching is challenging, humbling, and deeply fulfilling. I've learned you don't need to have all the answers. You just need heart, purpose, and the belief that what we do matters, because it truly does. Every day, I strive to be a role model for my students, for my fellow rookie teachers, and for future educators who, like me, are chasing a dream. Thank you, and now please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Courtney, can we get you and Megan to wait just a minute? We'll come down and grab a picture with you.
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Gullett, sorry, I turn it back over to you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chair. I recommend approval of the agenda for the May 13th, 2025, School Board meeting, with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of the following items: D-24.1, D-24.2, D-24.3, D-24.4, D-24.5, D-24.6, D-24.7, D-24.8, D-24.9, D-24.10, and D-24.11 that have been placed under discussion, regular agenda items, and Item C-21.1 has also been pulled and placed under discussion, pulled agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings and Dr. Campbell. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 3rd, 2025, special school board meeting?
Motion to approve the April 3rd minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Are there any additions or corrections? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 3rd, 2025 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. James. Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Five-zero. Ms. Gonzalez, please provide the proof of publication for tonight's school board meeting.
The notice for the May 13th, 2025, School Board meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on May 2nd, 2025. The proof of publication has been attached in board docs under proof of publication.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Good evening, Attorney Powers. Please explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the board this evening.
Thank you. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this evening's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures are available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 PM. This evening's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting, in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless a statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they'll be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students or their families are also strictly prohibited. A speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Gonzalez, do we have any speakers this evening?
Yes, we have two. Mr. Stephen Lilick.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Gullett, my name is Steve Lilick, and I'm here as Executive Director of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, otherwise known as NAMI for Marion County. It's so good to see familiar faces on the dais. It was my privilege to work for 20 years with Marion County Public Schools, and there's so many great things happening for our students in this district. NAMI is the nation's leading voice on mental health, and our organization is dedicated to building better lives for the millions of Americans affected by mental health challenges in their families, and that, of course, includes school-aged children. With May being Mental Health Awareness Month, I wanted to share a few statistics relating to our young people, and these are nationwide. NAMI reports that 1 in 6 U.S. youth ages 6 to 17 experience a mental health disorder each year. They also note that many mental health conditions first appear in youth and young adults, with 50% of all mental health conditions occurring before age 14. And in 2023, more than 1 in 5 high school students seriously considered attempting suicide. That's 20%. But there is hope. NAMI Marion County has been serving the citizens of Marion County for 37 years, and our three priorities are education, support, and advocacy. We have free weekly classes and support groups for adult family members and peer groups, and provide much-needed mental health resources and advocacy to our community. And I'm most proud to say that we began a partnership with the school district in 2023 to begin working in several of our high schools and starting NAMI on-campus clubs. Students in these clubs share what they have learned about mental health with their peers. They also advocate for improved mental health services on their campuses. In addition to our high school initiatives, I'm also proud to say that NAMI Marion County has been recognized by the youth philanthropy and action classes in our middle schools. I want to take this opportunity to give a big thank you to Dr. Gullett, the school board, and the Mental Health and Wellness Department for making community partnerships a priority in our district. You have welcomed NAMI Marion County into our high schools to provide the Ending the Silence training and to facilitate the NAMI on-campus clubs. We've also presented apparent partnership events and have had information tables at the Magnet Expo and at career fairs in the high schools. NAMI Marion County was named the state Affiliate of the Year in 2024, and it was in part because of our strong community partnerships. So thank you all for making our partnership a priority, and we look forward to expanding our reach in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Lilick.
Ms. Melanie Slaughter.
Melanie Slaughter, S-L-A-U-G-H-T-E-R. I am here today at the request of several grandparents, parents, blended families, who have realized now that graduation announcements have come out that Forrest and Vanguard have a graduation at the same date at the same time. And they are upset at the process because they really didn't know about it. I understand from talking to the principals that they kind of pick when they want to graduate. But the people that have called me are asking for the board to try to facilitate them thinking about the other families that are impacted. I think Forrest and Vanguard have the most conflicts with people having similar grandchildren or step-grandchildren or stepparents or something like that with children in both of those schools because of IB and CCAP. And so I told them, there's nothing you can do about it now. You can't just come up and change the graduation dates. But for next year, if we could please not have Forrest and Vanguard on the same date at the same time, it would be greatly appreciated, and they will stop calling me, hopefully. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Slaughter.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. The school district used a construction management delivery method, including a guaranteed maximum price, to perform construction work on the following projects. To allow the district to purchase materials through the owner-direct purchase process to save sales tax, the construction manager needs to return the funds to the owner via deductive change order. The superintendent has signed and approved the change orders. Per Board Policy 6345, the superintendent is authorized to approve and execute any construction contract change order that will increase the construction contract by $25,000 or less, or that will decrease the construction contract amount, provided that approval will be, in her judgment, in the best interest of the board. Such change orders will be binding upon execution by the superintendent. The superintendent shall report each change order that she approved to the board at the board meeting that follows her approval. The superintendent's approval of the change orders will be entered into the official minutes of the board meeting. Our first item for informational purposes is Compensation Amendment Number 2 to the Construction Manager Contract Guaranteed Maximum Price for Mechanical, Electrical, Plumbing, and Fire Protection for Building 1 through 4 related to construction of new high school CCC. Change Order Number 3, Amendment Number 2, Project 24-105. The sales tax saving is $444,623. The Guaranteed Maximum Price for Remodel at the West Bay Area into an HVAC and Welding Industrial Lab and Classroom Space at Marion Technical College. Change Order Number 1, Work Authorization Number 7, Project 24-129. The sales tax saving is $6,457.13. Guaranteed Maximum Price for District-Wide SOFIT Installation. Change Order Number 1, Work Authorization Number 3, Project 24-115. Sales Tax Savings $1,696.77. Central Warehouse Awarded Dade Paper and Bag LLC, Imperial Dade. Item Number 20, Spoon Combo Kits, Black Spoon Straws and Napkins. The Item Number 21, Fork Combo Kits, Forks, Straws, and Napkins. On Bid 4107MF, School Cafeteria Products for Central Warehouse. Term Contract. Due to tariffs, there have been a per-case increase of $3.38 per case. Increasing per-case cost for the Spoon and Fork Combo Kits from $11.04 to $14.42 per case. Price Increase for Bid 4107MF School Cafeteria Products for Central Warehouse. Term Contract. And that concludes our informational items for today. Board may I have a motion to approve high school CCC attendance rezoning?
So move.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Superintendent Gullett.
Thank you. The approval of the high school CCC attendance rezoning complies with Florida Statute 1001.41. Thank you.
Thank you. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the high school CCC attendance rezoning? Okay. Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the K-2 ELA Intervention Lexia Learning Systems Lexi Core 5 Reading? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. James.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Dr. Gullett.
Thank you. Instructional materials are adopted according to a process defined in State Statute 1006.28, as well as Board Policy 2521, and this course of action is recommended for adoption tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board regarding the K-2 ELA intervention that is recommended for adoption this evening? Okay. Seeing none? Is there any discussion from the board?
No.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the K-4, K-4 mathematics intervention, Hufflin-Mifflin Hardcore, Florida Waggle Math? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. May I have a second? Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Dr. Gullett.
Thank you. Once again, board, instructional materials are adopted according to a process defined in State Statute 1006.28 and Board Policy 2521. And again, this course is recommended for adoption this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board regarding the K-4 mathematics intervention that is recommended for adoption this evening? Seeing none. Board, is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Five-zero. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C-10.1 through C-20.1, with the exceptions of items D-24.1, D-24.2, D-24.3, D-24.4, D-24.5, D-24.6, D-24.7, D-24.8, D-24.9, D-24.10, and D-24.11 that have been placed under discussion, regular agenda items, and Item C-21.1 that has been pulled and placed under discussion, pulled agenda items. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Thank you, Dr. James. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Five-zero. Moving on to alternative placement. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through April 16th, 2025. Ms. Gonzalez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's path?
No, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-25-256, JD-25-260E, JD-25-267, JD-25-270, JD-25-271, JD-25-272, JD-25-276, JD-25-284, for the remainder of the 2024-2025 school year and the entire 2025-2026 school year? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. James. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-25-255, JD-25-261, JD-25-264, JD-25-265, JD-25-277, and JD-25-283, with off-campus virtual learning for the remainder of the 2024-2025 school year and the first, second, and the entire 2025-2026 school year? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. James.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Five-zero. Now moving on to discussion items. May I have a motion to approve the First Amendment with Cengage Learning Incorporated?
So move.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Dr. Gullett, you have some information for us on this item.
I certainly do. Thank you, Madam Chair. This item involves the use of digital library materials, including our career and technical education programs. The cost of $250,000. Ms. Riedel is here to provide additional information on this item. Thank you.
She started down, and then she turned back. Yeah, she's coming.
The First Amendment with Cengage Learning will allow us to purchase the Gale Database and Gale Virtual Reference Library, which will allow students and teachers access to credible and up-to-date digital library resources such as eBooks and articles. These resources are used by middle and high school students and students enrolled in CTE programs. The original amount was $250 for the 2425 fiscal year, and the amendment will allow us to extend the contractual term to end June 30th, 2026. So far, we've encumbered $73,570.74, leaving $176,429.26. This year, our students have completed 129,325 searches, which is an increase of 18% from the 2324 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Riedel. Board, is there any discussion on this item? Yes, Dr. James.
Thank you. And I'm going to make some comments in comments, but specifically to this item, I want to clarify, we are not spending an additional $250,000. We are extending the term of a contract that we've already allocated the money for. And I don't think, and this is kind of something I'll talk about later, but I don't think that reads that way when you look at board docs at all. It looks like this is a new $250,000 item, and honestly, unless you really dig into the meat and potatoes, you don't know that. So for the record, I want to clarify, which you did in your narrative as well, but this is simply extending the contract term of money that's already been allocated. That's the way I'm understanding it.
That's correct.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Anything further from the board? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement with speech-language pathologists? May I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Dr. Gullett, you have some information for us on this item.
I do, and Ms. Riedel's staying at the podium as well this time. The cost for this request is approximately $1.1 million, and that's because we are seeking your approval to enlist 12 independent speech-language pathologists that you know we use to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our students with individualized education plans. And Ms. Riedel has additionally details on this item. Thank you.
Yes, this board item includes independent contractor agreements with speech and language pathologists. These contracts will allow the ESC department to contract with 12 independent speech-language pathologists for the 2526 school year and may extend into ESY for 2026. These agreements will allow us to comply with students' individual education plans by providing appropriate therapies and a free, appropriate public education to eligible Marion County school students. The total amount of these contracts is $1,69,884.
Thank you, Ms. Riedel. Board, is there any discussion? Board, is there any discussion? Okay. I just had one quick question. How do we arrive at the hourly rate for a speech, for a speech pathologist?
So, um, there was actually a recent increase to their hourly rate. Um, I know that, um, Human Resources, they completed a salary study. We looked at several other districts, um, and we just needed to make sure that we could compete. Um, so we did just recently increase their salary. Um, and I don't have the chart in front of me right now.
I think it's fifty-seven dollars an hour if I remember correctly. Fifty-seven, yeah.
And I, it went up, um, two dollars an hour. I don't, I can send it to you. It's two dollars an hour, I think, for years zero through ten, and then a dollar an hour for ten years plus.
Okay. I was, I was trying to figure out, um, if that's an extra hour, I mean, an extra year of school, like a master's degree? Do you know, is that correct?
Uh, it, the salary was increased, um, across the board.
Okay. I was just, I was trying to compare it to our staff that have a master's degree and what their compensation is and what their annual salary is in compared to our speech pathologists. So I will, I can get with you later on that. So, thank you very much. All right. Any further questions? All right. Thank you, board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the Second Amendment to the Athletic Training and Service Agreement with the University of Florida Board of Trustees?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Dr. Gullett, you have some information to share with us on this item?
I, I do, board, and Mr. Tucker's coming forward. I, I wanna, before I talk about this item, I wanna congratulate Mr. Tucker, um, because he has just been recognized for the great work he's doing with athletics. So I just wanna say thank you for being here and thank you for your work for our students.
Thank you.
So this item, board, is approximately one hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And, uh, you remember that we brought this forward before. We currently have two trainers employed by University of Florida, and Mr. Tucker's gonna provide some additional details and, and the requirement for these services. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Tucker.
Good evening. So this, this contract, we actually entered into this back, I wanna say it was like two thousand nineteen originally, um, so we're kinda in the second cycle of this. Um, the purpose behind this contract is UF Health provides, trainers are hard to find as it is, right? And so as our trainers, we, we employ five trainers that belong to the school board, right? And so the purpose of the contract with UF Health is they supply trainers as our trainers attrition out. So currently, we have one at Westport High School and North Marion High School. The purpose behind this contract is they charge us for the hours that we use them. So, um, I think right now at Westport, it's thirty hours, and North Marion is twenty-five hours. So it's just based on their athletic needs, um, and that's kinda how that contract works. They also supply a physician that signs off on the training, uh, the standing orders that our, um, our trainers have to operate under. It's basically a list of, of things that they can do, um, under the guidance of a physician. And their physician comes down and, and makes sure that our trainers are eligible and that they're certified to, to do all those things. They make them, they run them through a list of things that, that they make them do in front of the physician, and then that's it. Um, and he signs off on their standing order. So they provide that at no charge to us. Um, so that's pretty much how the contract works. Um, when the new high school opens, they will fill a void if one of our trainers doesn't roll over into that school. They will fill that spot, um, with one of their trainers. So that's currently how that works.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Board, any conversation or discussion on that item? Okay. All right. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the First Amendment to Turnitin LLC? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve amendment for Turnitin.
Turnitin. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Um, we had a motion from Dr. Campbell's. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Dr. Gullett, you have some information for us on that item?
I do. Madam Chair, and Dr. Brewer's gonna come forward to share additional items, but you remember before, we had some conversation around this board about how this software is used to support our students in learning, that can detect the use of artificial intelligence, um, and given, and it also provides, um, feedback for writing. And I wanna also mention that it is included in our advanced coursework as well. So, um, Dr. Brewer, thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. I wanted to provide, provide some clarity because we have two programs that you, you just approved, one which is called Pack Back. So I wanted to just provide some clarity of the differences between the two. The, what we're asking you to approve tonight is Turnitin, and this agreement is an amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. This would be, um, paid for by the schools that choose to select to use this service, and the funds are generated by the students in these advanced courses like Dr. Gullett stated. And so this would be part of the funds that they earn for passing these exams. Those are the funds that would be used to purchase this particular software. And what this service does for the students is, is a true plagiarism detector. Um, whereas Pack Back, the other service that we have, is a writing tutor and really helps to develop the writer and helps to, helps the teachers with grading assessments. Um, but the big difference is where both can be a little bit of a plagiarism detector. Turnitin's sole purpose is to submit, students submit their work to a greater, greater, um, platform, and it's a true plagiarism detector, which is needed for our exams, um, for both IB International Baccalaureate and our Cambridge Assessments. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Board, any comment or discussion on this item? Yep. Dr. James?
Thank you. Um, when, when I look at it, it looks like just about fifty percent of the money, I guess, sixty percent of the money was used this year. So what, what are we gonna do next year to increase? Cause we're gonna, are we rolling over the twenty-three thousand that was from the first agreement?
That money was written into the agreement, but we don't have to spend all of that, all of those funds. And so we only, the only, um, money that was spent were the schools that elected to use it. Because once we started the agreement process, some schools decided to use Pack Back as their plagiarism detector, um, where others chose to use Turnitin.
Okay. It just looks like it's a little underutilized, based on the usage this year. And it was approved in August, so they had it most of the school year, I would hope. And so I'm just kind of wondering, what is the teacher's hesitation in using it? Cause it doesn't seem like it's being maximized. Cause the money's there if it's coming from the, the funds that are generated from the students passing the exam. So it would appear to me the teachers, the principals are just prioritizing that funding, that discretionary funding for other things besides Turnitin.
Well, they saw that, they, schools saw the value in the Pack Back plagiarism detector, and so really, it's a school-based decision which platform they use. Um, and that's, that's why schools chose, yeah, to use those funds in other ways.
So they're just, they're making a site-based decision, how to spend the money?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Well, it sounds like they're making a site-based decision on which program they want to use. Um, I think some may prefer Turnitin over the other one versus just.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Everybody's using a plagiarized detection software, though.
Yes. And the benefit to Pack Back that you've already approved is, and that's a continuation we've had Pack Back in the past too, is it provides that extra layer of a writing assistance, similar to what you may be familiar with, like a Grammarly. It provides guidance as students are learning to write.
Cool. Thank you.
Turnitin is an older platform that some teachers are more familiar with, but they both have that plagiarism detector.
So it's just by preference?
It is preference. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on Turnitin? All right. I'll call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. May I have a motion to approve the renewal of Piggyback Agreement with School District Services Incorporated? Polk County School Bid, uh, Number ITB zero four nine dash MJ dash zero six two four for school bus transportation. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Thrower and Reverend Cummings. Dr. Um, Dr. Gullett, you have some information on us, this for us?
Yes. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. The cost of this is, is a pretty big one. It's two, two million dollars. And Mr. Frazier's here, but I'd wanna just share that, uh, this is another, um, one of those ways that we're trying to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students through alternative learning. And so Mr. Frazier's gonna provide some specific details and, and through this amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. So our partnership with School District Services officially began on Monday, December the second of twenty twenty-four. They provide us with thirteen routes to transport our alternative learning students here at Marion Technical Institute. Although some of their formal tracking systems for on-time performance are not in place for them yet, internal monitoring indicates that as of April the twenty-third of twenty twenty-five, there have only been two late arrivals in the morning and one a late arrival in the afternoon across all thirteen routes, which reflects a ninety-eight percent on-time arrival rate. Uh, the financial summary to date, we've paid five hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars for services rendered. We anticipate an additional three hundred thousand will be paid by the end of the current school year, bringing the projected year-end total at nine hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Looking ahead to the summer session, projected cost range between three hundred and eighty-five, six hundred, and four hundred and eighty-two thousand, depending on service needs. Um, if we were to begin their services at the start of the school year in August, based on our current weekly cost projection of forty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars, the fifteen-week cost total would be seven hundred and twenty-three thousand. When we combine the current year total and the end of the year total with the summer session estimate and the fifteen-week projection starting in August, uh, the estimated cost comes out to around, uh, two million dollars. And this projection represents the high end of our anticipated costs and provides a comprehensive outlook for board planning. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Board, any concerns? Dr. James?
Yeah. Uh, the only concern that I've heard from the community is Here Comes the Bus is not available for School District Services. And so we, um, parents of students who are alternatively placed to MTI and rely on transportation don't necessarily know when their child's bus is arriving or if it was late, which most of them have been on time, so that's a positive. But we have had some outliers and unique patterns. And so I don't know if there was a way to expand Here Comes the Bus, or if that is a limiting factor because they're not our buses, and so, um, that's just not gonna be available. But I do know that families would like to know when their, just like our, just like our other, all of the other children we serve, those families would also like to know when their child is getting picked up and getting dropped off, et cetera.
So that's a great point. I can certainly follow up with School District Services to see what our options are there, if that's a possibility, and with our Transportation Department as well.
Okay. Maybe they could do a piggyback agreement on the one we have, and they can pay for it with the two million we're paying them to pick up our children. Just a thought.
Thank you, Dr. James. Board Member Thrower?
Just, uh, we didn't always have Here Comes the Bus, so how are these parents being notified now? Or aren't they? I mean, ninety-eight percent, uh, on time pickup and delivery is great, but that's, you know, two percent, that's still two percent of parents wondering, you know, where the bus is.
If they were notified of a delay, that would come from the school site. So from the MTI Alternative Learning staff, they would make an individual call out to that bus route or that family and let them know that the bus is running ten, fifteen, twenty minutes late, or whatever that may, estimation may be.
Okay. So they currently are getting notified in some form?
Yes.
Okay. Just not through and happen?
Correct.
Okay.
To be clear, though, our Transportation Department is not in control of these buses at all. So when the bus is late, the onus of communication about the late bus goes back to School District Services, not to Mr. Ostanik and our Transportation Department. And so, unique circumstances that I've been made aware of with one of our employees whose child was attending MTI, this child waited at the bus stop until about ten AM, then texted his mom and was like, I'm still waiting here. So he went back home for the day. And this internal employee thought, well, I can just call Transportation, but they can't call Transportation because it's completely outsurfaced platform. And then she, she didn't know, until he was marked absent in Skyward, was when she was communicated because that, that call went out. So I, I think it'd be worth at least an opportunity to have the discussion, cause we didn't always have it, that's correct, but now we do. And so if we're trying to give all students the same access, that's my only thought on it.
We can certainly explore that.
Okay.
And, and that would be the best solution. My concern was, in the meantime, you know, what has been happening and what needs to continue to happen because it's, it's courtesy, you know? And if the onus is on the school at the moment, um, to be communicated to from School District Services, just wanna make sure that that's happening. You know, when, when we contract with people, uh, to me, it's implied they take responsibility and come up with a procedure, either an app or whatever it is. So just to make sure the bases are covered until we have something else.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell, anything? Good? Okay. All right. Thank you. I did, I have just a couple of questions, which, um, I mentioned the other day as we were reviewing this. Does Mr. Ostanik review the routes?
Yes, he does. I confirm that with him.
Okay. Good. Um, cause my concern was, and I know, I know there may be some reasoning for this, but I just want some explanation. When I pull up and only six or seven kids get off of each bus, and they need thirteen buses, I just would like for the public to understand what the reasoning is for that.
No, understandably. And I know that, uh, when they, we first started with them, Mr. Ostanik did review all the routes, and we just recently had a conversation about that, um, after you asked that question, to make sure that we're continuing to monitor for operational efficiency.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right. Oh, my God, I found my glasses here. All right. Board, any other discussion? Any other comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Um, may I have a motion to renew bid thirty-nine thirty AH Food Service Juice and Juice Products Term Contract? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Dr. Gullett, you have some information for us on this item?
I do. Board, and the cost of this item is one million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand. It certainly takes a lot of money to provide juice and produce products to our students. Ms. Belcher is back. Glad to have her back tonight to share additional information on this item. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Conrad, board members, and Dr. Gullett. I'm here tonight to request permission to utilize the third renewal option for bid number three-nine-three-oh AH for juice and juice products. It's pretty simple. It's pretty simple. Approving this bid will allow Food Nutrition Services to continue to provide juice for the National School Lunch Program, After-School Snack Program, and our Supper Program. The threshold, as mentioned, is $1,575,000. We have encumbered, at the time of submission, 1.1 million. And with that, I'll open it up if you have any questions.
Thank you. Board, any questions, concerns?
Let me just say one thing.
Okay, sure.
As I've been listening to these discussion items and reading through them, I just hear the cash register just quick, 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 millions, millions of dollars.
Yes, to put that into perspective, juice costs maybe 12 to 15 cents apiece. We serve a lot of juice.
The volume. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. May I have a motion to renew bid 3980GM gasoline diesel biodiesel joint entity term contract? May I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
Okay.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Dr. Gullett, you have some information on this item for us?
Yes, Madam Chair, and now we're on to keeping our fleet running. So as it says, with the costs of gasoline, diesel, et cetera, we're looking at $5 million request. And Mr. Collins is here to provide some additional context with this joint request. We're working with City of Ocala through the Department of Transportation. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Bid 3980GM was issued for the supply of gasoline, diesel, and biodiesel to both the school board and the City of Ocala. By partnering with the city to issue this joint bid, we were able to consolidate our fuel needs, effectively increasing our collective purchasing power and positioning us to secure more competitive pricing. This bid renewal will ensure a continued fuel supply for our white fleet vehicles and school buses. As you know, Marion County is the fifth-largest county in Florida by land area, covering over 1,652 square miles. Given the size of our operations and the extensive travel required across the county on a daily basis, our fuel usage is significant, hence the substantial expenditure request for this renewal.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Board, any comments or concerns? Okay, all right. You got off easy tonight.
Thank you.
That's right. They have to go. You're right. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the resolution 25-06 authorizing the executive and, the executive and delivery of a non-exclusive perpetual easement, including the cost-sharing agreement, project 24-102. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Dr. Gullett, you have some information on this item for us?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. The cost for this request is approximately $650,000 for the easement for Winding Oaks Elementary School. And Ms. Usher is here to provide some additional details. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members. This pertains to Winding Oaks. It's a non-exclusive perpetual easement to the parent company KL Winding Oaks LLC. The easement is for landscaping, irrigation, and signage. So they'll maintain all that. And the cost-sharing agreement is for turn lanes on Southwest 49th Avenue and roadway improvements on 71st for potable water improvements and electrical improvements. And as the superintendent said, that's about $650,000.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Usher. Board, any, oh, yes, Dr. Campbell.
So while it isn't specific to this item, I, I do believe that it would be appropriate for us to bring up the email that we received this afternoon from, or excuse me, this morning from Mr. McFadden regarding not having a traffic signal available in time for school to start, therefore not having crosswalks. I received a rough estimate just before this meeting of what that traffic signal would cost, and it's roughly $750,000. I don't say that the school board needs to encumber any of those costs, but if there was a potential opportunity for cost sharing in that as well, certainly that is a small price to pay for student safety when we're considering the numbers of students that will be within the two-mile area of this school and need to walk and need to cross that street. I was very concerned when I received that email notification from the county. We've been building this school for a year, so it's interesting that there isn't a plan. I didn't see a time as to when the traffic light intends to be installed. So I just opened that up as at least a thought to say I don't, it would certainly help the developer as well with all the things that they're needing to do. I'm not necessarily saying we should enter into cost sharing on that traffic light being put into place, but I would be interested in entertaining their thoughts on it.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. We have been working with county staff on this, and we will stay on top of it. They did promise that the light is, will go in, and once the light goes in, we can do the crosswalk to ensure safe routes to school, but we will work with them on the schedule to see if that can be moved up.
And Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Usher. Yes, Reverend Cummings?
I, I became aware of this a couple of weeks ago on my tour because that is a county road that we're talking about. And so, there has been a lot of conversations with the county concerning the, the putting in of a, a light or the crosswalks. I think the timing is, is bad right now. And I, I don't, I don't think we should try to encumber it, but safety has to be a priority, even if we have to have someone, we've got to pay a deputy or whatever to be out there. We need to make sure that safety is the utmost importance. I think, Mr. McFadden, we need to talk to Mr. McFadden and come up with a plan of action because it's not going to be in there when school starts, and we need to make sure that we have something in place.
And Chair?
Yes.
And that was a, a question I asked in response to that email was, so then is there only going to be one crossing guard at the light, the intersection where they would be crossing? Or will there be two? I referenced in my email the work that I tried to do with regard to Highway 27, which is a state road, and outside of Howard Middle School, which the state refuses to put a school zone on Highway 27 in front of Howard, even though the entrance to the school and their reason is the same exact reason, which is the traffic light slows down traffic enough. Well, if you watch it, people run the red light and people with trailers run the red light all of the time. And to be very frank, the response I've gotten is there's been not, there hasn't been a fatality. And I'm sorry, but I think that is a garbage response. Why are we waiting for a fatality before we proactively do something to ensure that children and other pedestrians can safely cross traffic? So I would love to see a solution. I do not think we should pay for it at all because that is an intersection that is going to be used widely for a variety of things beyond just the instruction of students. But I can't wait to see what our solution is to ensure that children arrive safely to school because ultimately, the onus is on us now. Until, until the intersection comes, the onus will be, it will be our fault if it's not done correctly. So I look forward to us problem-solving, if that needs to be a workshop or otherwise, to ensure that we are, we have enough crossing guards and we have a plan to make sure kids are getting safely to school.
Dr. James, as Reverend Cummings said, in many cases, if the signal is not in place when school opens, then we would hire traffic police. So that's an option we could look at, but we'll continue to work with the county on the traffic signal.
Okay.
Did you have something else?
I, I was just going to wrap it up, just, just to say, I, I mean, I, I appreciate all the comments from fellow board members on that, and thank you, Ms. Usher, as well for having the information. Just the email that was received today from county engineering did not sound like they had a timeline as to when that traffic light was going to be in. And they know school starts in August. So I appreciate that you're working with them, but as Dr. James says, if something happens, it's going to be our fault, even though it's not our road. So I, I think that this, this item being on our discussion already just opened up the opportunity for us to have the conversation and make the community aware. Currently, we don't have a traffic signal where our school is going to be opening, and it is a county road. And we all just voted in a one-cent sales tax to help fund those things. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Ms. Usher. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Board Member Thrower.
In these situations, it's, it always has to be safety first. And anyone that has spent any time in, in that area, I would think would understand that reducing the speed limit, even considering that, is really necessary. I mean, who has, you'd have to have a bag over your head to not have noticed the growth down there and, and the traffic count. I would love to see just an updated traffic count from three years ago up till now to help prove the point. We're still struggling with this on Highway 27. And to say, "Well, we'll just wait till someone dies, then we'll do something about it." And when that someone happens to be a child, it just makes it that much more tragic. So this was an extremely disappointing email to receive. We have so much eager anticipation for these schools to open. They are community schools. Yes, we run them, but they're the community's schools. And so, I really look forward to the day when there is that more optimistic collaboration and, and just having that foresight because I don't want hindsight to be 2020 in situations like these. That's what I've got for you.
All right. Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Board, we'll go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the grant application, safety and security school buildings? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Dr. Gullett, you have some information for us regarding this item?
Yes, certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. McFadden is going to come forward. Board, to date, we've been very fortunate to receive annual grant opportunities from the Florida Department of Education for safety, and this is one of those. And so, it includes access control, cameras, locks, and we're identifying the needs here through these dollars to address the Florida Safe Schools Assessment Tool and those areas that we need to make sure that we solidify and make them as safe as possible. So Mr. McFadden is going to provide additional details for this request. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. The grant application for safety and security of school buildings. The Safety and Security of School Buildings Grant issued by the Florida Department of Education offers school districts with an opportunity to strengthen physical security access, or strengthen physical security across their district. With board approval, the district and its charter schools will receive a combined total of $633,757. Of that, $626,036 will be allocated specifically for Marion County Public Schools. These funds will be used to address security needs identified through the Florida Safe Schools Assessment Tool. Projects may include installation or upgrade of access control systems, security cameras, and door locking hardware. These enhancements are part of our continued commitment to maintaining safe and secure environments where students and staff can focus on teaching and learning.
Thank you, Mr. McFadden. Board, any conversation on this item? Dr. James?
Just one quick question. Anna A. Colon is not listed in the narrative. Is that because the school's newer, or?
Well, we found out that Anna doesn't own their building, and because they don't own their building per se, they can't make any upgrades to their, to their building. So their portion of the, the grant that they would receive is dispersed amongst other charter schools.
Max.
That's a, that's a decision, that's a, that's basically the state requires certain, you can only use it for certain things. And one of the things they may, I, I don't know what they want to use it for, but it could be for putting up fencing or, or something. But they done a lot of security upgrades or implementation when they first built their school, so they pretty much have a whole lot of what
We're doing.
the grant allows them to have. And to add anything more, there's a discussion between them and the owners of their buildings to, um,
Okay. I just, they were absent from the, the narrative, so I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Anything, yes, Reverend Cummings?
Chair, I did, and I guess that Dr. James kind of touched on it. I did want everyone to know that this does include all of our schools, including the charter schools. So that, that part of this grant does fund the safety implications, implementation at our charter schools as well.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Anything further? Okay. Thank you, Mr. McFadden. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the First Amendment to Agreement with Tyler Technologies? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. May I have a second? Thank you, Board Member Thrower. Dr. Gullett, you have some information for us regarding this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Ostanik is coming forward to share specifics. But Board, we are asking for your permission to approve this item at the cost of $982,000. And earlier tonight, you've already talked about tracking, real-time tracking for students on, on our, our buses. So Mr. Ostanik is going to share some additional details here. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. This agenda item is an amendment to our current agreement with Tyler Technologies. Tyler Tech is a vendor we use for our transportation and routing software, and they provide us support with that software also. The amendment allows us to purchase new tablets for our buses that will be supported via Tyler Drive. The new tablets and software will allow live updates to help improve the efficiency of our transportation department. Integrated tablet features include turn-by-turn GPS directions for our routes, student drop-off restriction notifications, electronic seating charts, student ridership tracking, dynamic run capabilities, driver attendance reports, and access to all routes and runs. Now open up to questions.
All right. Thank you very much. We've been waiting on this item to come forward. So this board member is excited. Board, any discussions or questions? Dr. James, your?
Um, I would just make the same request I made earlier, which is to extend the opportunity for school district services to be able to maybe piggyback off this. I would love to see this available to all students who ride on buses that come to a Marion County Public School. And I know this is more of a, a fix for the driver than it is the, the end user, but if those drivers are able to navigate traffic better and use all these amenities, then our students are arriving safer to school as well, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. James. Yes, Dr. Campbell?
I'm just overjoyed that we're about to have GPS in our buses. So the fact that we haven't, community, please be aware we have not and we are about to. I can only imagine what that's going to do to our dispatchers and all the folks that are sitting and have the new drivers and the substitute drivers and trying to, they miss the turn and all the navigating that they're trying to do. This is just going to be amazing. To Dr. James' point, while I completely appreciate the idea that we would encourage our other vendor to take this on and potentially piggyback, I certainly want it, wouldn't want to make it a requirement for them to do so because that would be added cost for them too. I appreciate that, the interest in having all of our students be able to have access to the same, but it's possible that they might have their own GPS system for their own buses or something that they're continually, or considering doing an upgrade on their own buses. So love the idea of extending the opportunity to them, but we don't need to pay for it.
Oh, definitely not.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Anything else? Yes, Board Member Thrower?
Thank you. I would just say from a safety standpoint, if, for all students, if it looks like we're going to be continuing with school district services as the conversations continue to just, you know, flat ask them, you know, what are you doing along these lines? Because everyone knows that they're transporting some kids for us that tend to have some struggles here and there. So anything we can do to make the rides safer for, for everybody is always a good thing.
Okay. Thank you, Board Member Thrower. All right. Seeing no further concerns, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the Second Amendment to the Agreement with J. Brown Professional Group or JB Pro? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Dr. Gullett, you have some information on this item you'd like to share with us?
Yes, thank you. Our last discussion item tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Ayers is here. Board, we're asking for, at the cost of $263,000, your approval for this item that provides some assistance, especially as it pertains to our interlocal agreement. So Mr. Ayers will provide additional context with that. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Pastor Co-Chair, board members, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, Ms. Gonzalez. This is a Second Amendment to the Agreement with JB Brown Professional Group, Inc. JB Brown Professional Group or JB Pro currently has an agreement with the Government and Community Relations Department to provide planning services for Marion County Public Schools' interlocal agreement services. JB Pro is supporting the district's planning efforts by ensuring the initial draft of the Technical Education Facilities Plan drafted in the fall of 2024 is reviewed, updated, and adopted by the Public School Planning Officials, PSPO. And the process for drafting and adopting the 2526 Technical Education Facilities Plan meets the state of Florida in best school planning practices. JB Pro also provides planning services for Marion County Public Schools' preconstruction and planning. JB Pro assists the facilities department procurement process. JB Pro and the Marion County Public Schools are working together through project preconstruction, tackling the specific needs of each new school development so that the contractor chosen for the work is best suited for the project, and the project meets the best interests of Marion County. The work establishes the following coordinated process: pre-request for proposal meetings, bid process meetings between JB Pro and MCPS, requests for qualifications, RFQs, and response management, and final procurement of a contractor. Additionally, JB Pro has submitted two proposals to continue working with the Marion County Public Schools' interlocal agreement services and conduct a comprehensive review of Marion County's impact fees. The review will assess the expected and actual revenue generated from impact fees since their most recent adjustment and provide a detailed analysis to support the district's future planning and funding strategies. This agreement is good through June 30th, 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Board, do you have any questions for Mr. Ayers? Any concerns?
I just a comment. I understand we were briefed, and I understand that they are working towards essentially concluding their work by this fall when we have our joint meeting again. And I am hopeful that that meeting will serve to be more informative than the last one that they presented in. And then I look forward to us hiring a planner who will serve this district within our organization.
Thank you, Dr. James. Any other comments? Yes, Dr. Campbell?
I, I wasn't planning to comment at all because I understand the work that they're trying to do and grateful that they have identified the challenges that we acknowledged during the most recent intergovernmental meeting that the data that currently is being shared within our community among planning departments doesn't speak to each other. And so I'm grateful that the school district is going to be taking on that cost to make sure that our county and city data for planning purposes does work for everybody. Uh, and I know that those local entities are also excited to have that information once we've paid for it. So, uh, I'm certain that once this, um, information is, is developed and that a system is put into place, that our next intergovernmental meeting will be very effective, that we'll be able to receive the information that we all can use to the best of our ability, specifically for school planning purposes. But I'm certain it'll impact the county for all kinds of reasons. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Anything further? All right. Thank you, Mr. Ayers. We appreciate you. Um, and since seeing no further discussions, discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the guaranteed max, maximum price for early release and preconstruction for Osceola Middle School Building Improvements Building One, Project Two-Five-Dash-One-One-Five. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Dr. Campbell, you pulled this item. Would you like to have further discussion?
I did pull this item, and I see Mr. Ms. Usher at the podium. If you'd like to share, I didn't have much to discuss, but I, I'm opening it up to you if you want to share a bit more. I, I think that the unique challenges that we are experiencing at Osceola Middle School that none of us were expecting or anticipating, I think it warrants us to not place an item like this in consent, and that we do need to at least have discussion for the purpose of the community, understanding what our challenges are.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Campbell. Um, we did commission a study to, um, evaluate the moisture intrusion. We received that study on April 4th, and right away, we knew something had to be done. So we started working on the, um, getting it all done during the summer. And that's why we have this early release package to, of 500,000 while the contractor work on the GMP. At least right away, as soon as school is out, they can get started. It is the contract with Ozley Construction. It is 500,000. We're on a very tight schedule, and that's why, um, we'll come back with the GMP, but we're trying to get all the remediation. Besides just all the interior work, we also have to really seal the outside of the building to prevent further, um, moisture intrusion. So the schedule is quite important, and we're doing our best to make sure we get everything done. As Ms. Kynard said, it has to be done this summer.
Right?
It has to be. We don't have other options.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Usher, for that, for elaborating on the reason that I pulled this item, Board. I just asked that as we do have items, and there will be others, I believe, costs associated with this specifically, that we not place them in consent. I, I think that we need to ensure that our community is aware of what's happening. Uh, and when we sometimes have them in consent, it looks as if we're not making them aware publicly. So, um, thank you for the opportunity to have the discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Thank you, Ms. Usher. Yes, Dr. James?
Um, my only request is that we develop a contingency plan so that if, if it's not, because I, my, the way I understand the scope of work is it's not just exterior, but we're also doing things on the interior?
Yes, Dr. James. We'll do the interior first. We have two companies. We have the remediation company, Simpson Environmental. We'll be working with Ozley, and we'll address the interior first to make sure everything is cleared up, all the air handlers cleaned, the carpet changed, the wood changed, all that inside. And the stuff that can probably be done during school, like sealing the mortar and the brick, if we have to do anything beyond the summer, then we would do that.
So my, um, I've, I've lived in an old house once or twice, and I like to equate it to the If You Give a Mouse a Cookie book, because it just, you peel back one layer and you see something else. And so I would like, instead of throwing a Hail Mary in the late July, I would like for us to go into this project with the principal with a contingency plan for August, when are we starting school? August 12th, August 11th, whatever day it is? So that if it's not done, we're not trying to do a Hail Mary like we did last year in the summer for MTI, where we're trying to figure out what we're going to do and where they're going to go. And then if we don't need a contingency plan, no big deal. But I would feel much more comfortable if we develop a contingency plan with the principal for what it could look like so that we can execute it if necessary. Because they don't know what they're going to see. I mean, we, we want to say that, but this, it's literally a hundred-year-old building. So who knows what's going to happen when they start digging into it. So that's just my request as one board member.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Dr. Campbell.
I certainly appreciate planning, and, and I certainly appreciate the need to have a plan, a contingency plan. Uh, that, that will be fun for someone to develop, and fun being a very facetious word, where we're going to put 900 students as a contingency. I, I don't know the answer to that. So Ms. Kynard, have fun.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I certainly appreciate it and understand, uh, there, I've walked it. We'll, we'll have a new gym almost completed, but it won't be completed by August either. So, um, 900 students in another location on August 12th. Um, I, let, I guess, let's have, let's have a backup plan.
Ms. Usher, am I correct in that there has already been, been some research done about how that can be managed, and they would work classroom by classroom?
Yes.
Um, move the students out, they would go to a separate lo, a different location, and then, because, because they anticipate and things change, but that remediation can happen in a couple of days, and then they, those students would move back into the room? Is that correct?
Chair, Kynard, it will be in the summer, so that's why we.
Right, but if, if it takes longer, so there is, there's a backup plan?
I just want to say it will not take longer. Sorry, but we do have to work in a contingency plan. The thing is, the subcontractors, they have been in the building, the assessment that was done, the environmental engineers, they have been in there, they have looked at everything, pulled samples, they, they have broken the walls and all that. But you're right, we don't know what we will find. But, um, in regards to the backup plan, I'll have to talk to Ms. Kynard and the principal.
Okay.
Because I don't know what it is, but our goal is to get it done during the summer.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, Dr. James?
Chair, I think the room by room was a plan prior to this necessity to address all summer. I think, my understanding is the summer is like a full steam ahead kind of approach, which is different. And so if, if it's all gets, if it all gets addressed at the same time, and then it all doesn't get put back at the same time, then, then we're going to fall short. And so I'd personally just like to not deal with the stress of that at late July when we could address it in May or June. So.
Right. So, Ms. Usher, we may want to know what the backup plan is, is what I'm hearing from the board. But thank you very much for your presentation. Yes, Dr. James?
Well, and for context, I guess I'll just add, you know, we were supposed to have windows and doors at North Marion, and then we went three-quarters of a school year with no windows, and we had, we had wood on our windows, right? Because it was all going to go great until it didn't go great. And then we had wood on windows for three-quarters of a school year. So I would, and there was no backup plan, except to put wood and make pretend exit doors that were, you know, approved by code, but were plywood on hinges. So I just want to make sure that we're doing our homework to prepare ourselves so that we don't have to do that in the 11th hour. That's all I'm asking.
That's good. Reverend Cummings, did you have something?
I would just ask, so we can kind of move on with this one, because I, I think Ms. Usher is giving us some good information that we get a periodic update, the board get an update.
Okay, certainly.
And that, I think that can help us if we have to do the contingency plan or whatever we need to do. Because we do know when you're dealing with old buildings, that things could pop up. We saw it with the old school board building, we saw it with Howard Academy. So there could be anything that pop up. But I think if we get those periodic updates from Ms. Usher, we'll be okay.
With them.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Thank you, Ms. Usher. All right. With no further comments, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Um, at this time, Board, uh, there was a unanimous concern at our last meeting about the placement for the students at Fordham Learning Center. So can I ask Ms. Riedel if you'll come down and kind of give us the overview of what you found out so far? Is Ms. Brewer here? Is Dr. Brewer here?
Yes.
Okay.
We got an email, I think, today concerning that.
I didn't know.
Something. I'm sorry, I was.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
So we are talking about our 17 second-grade students at Fordham Early Learning, um, and their assignments for third grade next year. Um, out of the 17 students, 15 of them have selected a school. Um, we have, or, or received offers and had accepted seats. So we have two students, um, left that were offered seats at two schools, um, South Ocala and Anthony Elementary, and we're just waiting, um, for, for those two families to, um, accept those seats. But the other 15, um, are, are assigned. We have eight students going to Dr. N. H. Jones, one to Spar Elementary, two students to Eighth Street, two students to Ocala Springs, and two students to private schools. Um, so we're keeping track of those, and I know Jennifer Thomas, um, has been reaching out to those families daily and keeping us updated so that we can ensure that they all have a place, um, for next school year. And then moving into the 26, or 25, sorry, 26, 27 school year, we know that we're going to have three classes of second-grade students graduating or, um, or finishing up at Fordham next spring. That will be about 54 students. And so we have, um, put a timeline in place. Um, and I don't know if you want me to, to, to share that information now or not, but Dr. Gullett?
Certainly. And I want to thank Ms. Riedel because we've been working on this, um, and making contact with those parents. But go ahead and share the plan for next year and
Next year, okay.
In advance. Thank you.
Um, so I've met with Mr. Ayers, Ms. Thomas, um, Ms. Beck, and some other folks, and we've sat down and looked at this up and down and sideways and trying to figure out, um, what, what can the plan be and what can we offer these students, um, next year so that they know ahead of time, um, what their options are, and they don't have to worry about it, um, come the spring of 2026. So our normal school choice magnet window opens in November, and it runs through January. So, um, parents will always have the option at that time to apply for one of the magnet programs from November to January. Um, the magnet lottery offers are released, and the waitlists are created sometime in mid-February. So at that point, any Fordham Early Learning second graders who applied for a magnet program would know by mid-February if they are to be accepted or not. Normally, um, beginning of April, we would open up our controlled open enrollment. So what we are thinking we could do is the Beyond Fordham Opportunity Placement Window would open March 23rd for controlled open enrollment, and that would be ahead of the normal controlled open enrollment window for all of the other students. Um, at that point in time, we would look at schools, specific schools will be identified based on any enrollment that's below, um, 95% or 95% or below. And so if a Fordham second-grade family applies for controlled open enrollment, when that window opens in March, they have their option of selecting any schools that are 95% or below. Um, they would be notified before the regular controlled open en, enrollment window opens. Does, does that make sense? Do you have any questions about that? Um, I can go over that timeline again.
Any questions, Board, concerns?
You just.
I, I just wanted to do my, I wanted us to get some answers on it, particularly the students for this year. I did have a clarifying, um, point I would like you to share. The two students that are not placed yet, the school, the placement that they off, have been offered is the placement that they asked for. Isn't that correct?
South Ocala, I believe it was the third choice. They get three choices when they apply. And so South Ocala was the third option. So they've been offered that seat. Um, and then the one at Anthony Elementary, I believe, um, Ms. Thomas spoke to this parent, and during the conversation, that school was offered. The parents seemed excited about that opportunity, so they went ahead and offered the seat, and we're just waiting on confirmation.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yes, Dr. Campbell?
So I certainly appreciate the plan, because I know that this is, this is going to be creative, how, how to do this. Only offering them controlled open enrollment as opposed to dedicating seats in our magnet programs, in my opinion, still somewhat defeats the purpose. And I, I understand why we would need, again, I discussed this before, sanctity of the lottery, I get it. But looking at the schools just on our attendance report right now that are below 95%, there aren't that many. And I, I know we won't fully know what that looks like until the beginning of next school year, whenever we have two new elementary schools open, and so that will change a bit. But just looking specifically in District One, the schools that I represent, there, um, there aren't that many. So I, I just, I, I appreciate the hard work you guys are trying to do to make this work and to make this square peg fit into a round hole. But I still think it's imperative that we prioritize these Fordham students almost as if they're sibling placements. That's my expectation or my request. I know that one of our magnet programs this year did not have any third-grade seats open because of siblings, and not considering these students in that same vein. I understand they're not siblings. I, I underst, I, I just think we have to treat them differently. We, we just do. We've created this gem of a magnet program for early learning specifically, and the uniqueness of not going to third grade in that school, and I get why we're not. But because of class size amendment, fourth grade is where the, the class size opens up, and third grade doesn't. And so we have a unique challenge. I, I like what you guys are working on. I, I don't know that I'm completely satisfied with it. That's my own personal perspective, and certainly if other board members agree with me, then we can continue to have a conversation.
Yes, Dr. James?
Well, and what I would like to say is I appreciate the off, I appreciate the update for tonight, and I maintain that I would like to see a work session in the fall to address what this plan looks like for next school year. Like, I don't want to talk about, I don't really think even talking about it right now in depth is appropriate. It wasn't agendized. And so I think we need to have an agendized item in the fall about what we will do ahead of the school choice window start opening. The per, that's my personal opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Board Member Thrower?
There's, uh, thank you. And, um, yes, because this is a big topic and an important one to families, we do need to have a, a work session on it to discuss it in depth, and I look forward, um, to that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
One of the other things to consider, I just want to mention, we have siblings, um, right now, sitting on a waiting list. So while we did look at that option, Dr. Campbell, that you mentioned, um, we have siblings now sitting on the waiting list, so that is an additional challenge. Um, you know, the student goes to, say, Madison Street, and there might be two siblings on the waiting list waiting to get in there as well. So that was another challenge we faced when looking at this, so.
All right. So work session further, work session coming soon. All right. Thank you, Ms. Riedel. I appreciate you stepping forward, um, to answer those questions. Um, moving on to meeting reminders, reminders, the next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for May 22nd, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. Um, and we have, there is Forest Baccalaureate that evening. There is a school board meeting scheduled for May 27th, 2025. The school board meeting is at 5:30, and Vanguard Baccalaureate, um, is that evening also. So just kind of reiterating what Ms. Flotter shared with us, um, earlier, it becomes a very challenging time of year for, for all of us to get where we'd like to be. Um, at that, this time, I will start with board comments. Ms. Gonzalez, do you have anything to share with us this evening?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Gullett?
I'll be very brief. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so we will be celebrating our graduates starting, believe it or not, next Wednesday, May 21st, already a week from tomorrow. And that will follow with, uh, a number of graduations. But also, the last day of school is the following Thursday, May 29th. So, looking forward to celebrating our students. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Attorney Powers?
I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that today is May 13th, which is National Children of Fallen Patriots Day. Um, one of the things we talk about when we talk about mental health and aware, and, uh, fitness and awareness is that, uh, different students come to school with very different challenges. And some of them have rather extreme challenges. And so, uh, 25 years ago, this day was set aside because May 13th of 1864 was the day that Arlington National Cemetery, uh, opened, um, was established. So, um, just like to ask everybody, if you are aware or have someone in your community or family who is affected in that way, uh, please reach out to them.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. All right. Good evening, Mr. Martin. You've been waiting patiently on us this evening. We look forward to hearing from you. You have board comments you want to share with us tonight?
Yes, ma'am, I have a few. Um, first, I just wanted to, uh, express my gratitude for, um, y'all's, just, um, how y'all are prioritizing mental health as high school students. I just wanted to give you guys the perspective of a high school student. I believe that mental health issues is a real thing that can't be brushed off to the side. You know, I don't think we can be great, successful people, the great, successful people that you want us to be in this world without focusing on our mental health. So I appreciate you guys prioritizing that and trying to place that in our schools. And I appreciate you guys working on that for us. I also want to talk about, we were talking about investing in trainers from UF. And as an athlete, I'm really appreciative of that. It helps take care of our bodies for sure and helps us to remain healthy so that we can achieve our goals. And then just finishing up, speaking about athletes, last time I was here, I spoke about the Night of Champions event. I was there, and it was amazing. It was a great time for our community to come together and just be a shoulder to rely on, just a shoulder to cry on, be there for each other, support one another, uplift one another, no matter what they're going through. And I'm really appreciative that we can have events like that and FCA events in our schools throughout the county. But outside of that, I just want to thank you guys for allowing me to be here again and just allow me to have a great high school career and a great senior year. Thank you, guys.
We want to especially thank you for being here this evening. We know your calendar is full. So we are grateful that you're with us this evening. And we have had many student board members share with us the importance of mental health. It keeps being reiterated. So thank you again for sharing the things that are important to you. Okay, Dr. James?
Thank you. I have a couple of different things tonight. I will start, I guess I can start with graduation. There's actually three baccalaurates on the 27th. And so I have maintained a position that I would like for us to really, when we get into the month of May, try to consider when there are board meetings, because we are here and can't be there. And this is the priority. But it is, it is important to me to be able to participate. North Marion's Baccalaureate is in my community, and I cannot go because I will be here. And so that is for three of us, because there are three next in two weeks from today. But further looking at graduation, and these were some remarks I shared with Ms. Slaughter prior to the meeting starting. I stand by, I think Bellevue High School's graduation is the best, and it is on their high school campus. I understand not every stadium has the ability to house all of the participants, but Booster Stadium does. And if we were to address the auditory concerns at Booster, then we theoretically could be hosting graduations at Booster. And if we hosted them at Booster, I do believe that they could be just as beautiful as the graduation at Bellevue. And it would put us maybe in a position where we would have a little bit more flexibility with days and times. I personally, while I know, I didn't graduate from Marion County Public Schools, so I don't have the historical connection to the Livestock Pavilion, which I know many Marion County lifelong residents do. But I do believe that there are better places to house graduation than the Livestock Pavilion. And I think for specifically like Forest and Vanguard, Booster Stadium would hold enough for Forest and Vanguard. And I know it would take some strategic planning, doing it all in the morning potentially to avoid evening rains. But I just would love to see a transition. I understand this is the preference of the principals. But I do think that there are a variety of individuals throughout the community who would like to see it done differently. And so I would appreciate a community dialogue on it if that was possible. I want to touch on the expulsions for off-campus virtual learning today. All of the expulsions for off-campus virtual learning that we approved were students who were housed at Marion Technical Institute and then reoffended here and were headed to virtual learning for all of next school year. I, as a board member, I don't love that we do not have a pulse on those students for over a year. Because ultimately, if they're not going to drop out or graduate, we will be responsible for them when they return. And they more than likely, statistics show, will be behind and not prepared to return to base. So I would still like to see this board problem-solve alternatives to off-campus virtual learning where we keep a stronger pulse on the students and ensure that they are continuing their education. But furthermore, I do not think you should go from home all the way back to base. I think there should be a middle ground stop at MTI. And I've shared this with district leadership. I think going from home and then going all the way back to base, I feel like you're skipping a step, and you need to come back to MTI and prove that you are ready to go back into the large environment. So maybe when we have the code of conduct conversation, we could digress into a conversation about that. But I would like to see us have a discussion collectively about what that looks like, because it has changed just this school year. And I would like to see further discussion on it. I want to highlight the ODP savings that we're able to share in the information-only section of the meeting. I know specifically Mr. Smallrich has shared that he's really happy to get that ODP savings because even that little bit of money he's able to use for FFNE, furnitures and fixtures, for them, what they're doing out there. And he really appreciates getting that money back. And so I just wanted to highlight that. And then finally, I just wanted to comment on the language in board docs. I mentioned it earlier. And if board, if you have board docs up, I would point you to 11.1 and 13.1, which were in the consent agenda, as examples, and then we could go back to 24.1. But 11.1 says it costs $74,399.75 that will be spent upon state approval by June 30th, 2025. So if you are just reading the board docs or the attachment, your assumption would read that we are tonight, May 13th, approving $74,000 to be spent for students by June 30th. And the students' last day of school is in 13 days. That's not actually what the meat and potatoes is because this is a grant, and it's a, I wouldn't, I spoke with Ms. Riedel about it. But essentially, the state's going to wind up extending it, or maybe something will look different. But regardless, if you're a community member and you're reading this, it looks like we just approved for $75,000 to be spent for students when they have 13 days of school left. And I don't love the way that reads. Then we go to 13.1, which was $150,000 to be spent by June 30th, 2025. This is basically paying back money for services that have already been rendered, is the way I believe I understand it, for this program. But if you read this narrative, that's not how it reads. It reads as if it's a future tense, like we are going to approve this, and then we're going to provide the service. It doesn't read as though the service has already been offered. And so from a transparency perspective, I would like us either in the rationale and methodology or maybe in the top part, to get a little bit more specific about when the money's being spent and how it's being spent. Because it looks like we approved $215,000, $225,000 tonight that's all supposed to be spent by June 30th, as if it has not already been spent. And so then if you go back to 24.1, which I mentioned briefly when we were adding the item here, we say it costs $250,000, but I actually think the dollar amount should be zero because we're not actually adding any money. And all of the other ones where we're adding an amendment, we're just putting what the amendment is for, the amendment increase. Well, this is just an extension of a timeline. So in my opinion, the dollar amount for this should be zero. So again, to the community, it looks like we approved an additional $250,000 for this company when really all we did was extend and push out the expiration of the contract. So those are... I'm sorry?
It's a new year. $250,000 was approved for 2024, 2025. And if you read the second line of financial history and timeframe, it says the district has encumbered 73,570, leaving 176,429 for the remaining 24, 25 fiscal year. The First Amendment extends the contractual term to end on June 30th, 2026, adding, so that's an additional, it says that the cost of services shall not exceed $250,000 annually for each term.
Correct. But when asked tonight, what we were told was that there is no additional money being spent for this, and we are simply pushing out the end time. We're not adding any more money. The money's available for next year is the remainder, 176,429.26.
But there was no term for '25, '26.
I under... Correct. My point is, it doesn't cost $250,000 additional dollars.
Yes, it does. For '25, '26, it costs an additional $250,000.
I don't think so. So if somebody wants to clarify, because that's not what I gathered from my research prior to the meeting and then the discussion that happened today in the meeting, that we are extending the timeline, we are not spending an additional 250.
I'll have someone else clarify.
And so my concern is there's confusion about it. And if I'm confused about it, and I spend a lot of time studying this, then it's clearly very confusing to the public as well. Because they're asking me questions about the transparency of it. So that is not how this reads. And so I think we have issues with rationale, and we have issues with the amount. And so I would like to see some, whether it's a work session or what, but I think there needs to be some work done in how we're putting things out on board docs. And I would love to know more about D 24.1 at some point. So that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Reverend Cummings?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few things. I do, again, want to congratulate Mr. Tucker on being awarded the State Award for Merit for Athletic Directors. That's a major achievement, and he's done a tremendous job. I was going to bring up the item about winding oaks and the traffic. Thank Dr. Campbell for bringing it up because there is a problem, there's going to be an issue when you look in that area where the school has been built and is continuing to be built. There's a lot of construction right across the street. And there's going to be a lot of families in that area that are going to be sending their kids to school. And I can anticipate that some of those kids will be riding bikes and walking across the road. We have reached out to the county. The builders reached out to the county concerning this issue. So this wasn't just an issue that came up today. This has been an issue that we've been talking about for a while. So I'm hoping that, again, the buck's going to fall on us. Whether the county does anything or not, it's going to fall on us. So I appreciate Mr. McFadden for kind of taking the bull by the horns and saying, hey, we need to do something. Safety is not convenient, and it's not cheap. It's not going to be cheap. So I'm looking forward to us having the work session, possibly Mr. McFadden bringing us some type of possibilities or options for us, because we got to make sure those kids do get to school safely, cross that street safely. And I'm hoping that the county is going to, with conversations with us, figure out a way to get this done a little bit faster. There was a traffic study done. I think the traffic study may be a little outdated now, but there was one done, and we need to look at it again to make sure that we're getting that, these kids to schools, these families coming into that area. The least I think we could do is at least have a temporary reduction of speed put there, something, because that's needed. It needs to be a school zone. So we definitely need to talk about that. And then thirdly, my final thing is to talk about the graduation. Thank you, Attorney Slaughter, for coming forth with the concerns with graduation. Last year, I had the same concern because there was, I'm one that normally goes to all of the graduations. There was one conflict last year where we couldn't, I couldn't go to all of the graduations. And I asked at that time that we would make sure that we look at our scheduling for graduations because that is a rite of passage for these students. That is a high time for us to celebrate with our schools, whether they're in our district or not. All schools are our schools, and we want to celebrate with these students and their families in this milestone achievement. So it's important that we have the opportunity to be able to attend. Unfortunately, this presents a challenge with Forest and Vanguard. And for someone like me that has people in pretty much every school, it's saying I got to choose one over the other. So I understand scheduling with buildings and facilities and all those types of things. But we got to try to have an opportunity for us to be able to get there. If you're a grandparent that has a kid that lives on both sides of town or a family member or even a, just a different type of family setup, you can't get to both. It's just not going to happen. And so then it's almost like you're saying to the family, one kid has preference over the other, or one kid is more important than others. So I think we don't need to be the, the district doesn't need to be callous of having that family that made that decision. I think the district needs to do whatever we can do in the schools to try to make sure that our graduations don't conflict with each other and that we all can get there and celebrate with these young people and their families. And finally, as I close, I think our student board member for being here, bringing the input that he brings. And I want to encourage him and all of his classmates and all of his classmates behind him and all those folk that this is graduation season. This is a season that everybody's celebrating, everybody's partying, and all doing all those things and having fun. I want them to have memorable celebrations and safe celebrations and celebrations where you live to see another day. That's most important because life is not, this is not the end. This is the beginning of something. And we want to make sure that you get to have the full potential of your life. And so I ask that these young people and these parents and whomever that are throwing these parties or doing whatever, that they be responsible, that they keep these kids safe, and that we can hear about the great things they're going to do in the future, and their life's not cut short. So, thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Board member thrower?
Thank you. And yes, it's just such a time of celebration. And in the meantime, there's still a lot of testing going on. And it is just mind-boggling how the schools are balancing everything that they have going on, the schools, the kids, the teachers. Throw in some teacher appreciation week. I mean, it is just, it's a beehive in every single school. And so much anticipation, so much push, you know, to make it through for the kids that still have some requirements to meet. And so I just really want to encourage everyone to keep your eye on whatever ball you have in the air. And you might have 10 or 12 of them. But it's all going to be over in a flash. And Mr. Tucker, I think pretty much everybody had you on their list tonight in a good way. I had you written down to congratulate you. I don't know that we've had a State Award of Merit in this capacity happen in Marion County Public Schools before, at least not in my memory. So congratulations to you, and thank you for representing us so well. Yes, graduation, there are so many different priorities that all of us have. And it would be wonderful to at least have no graduations be at the same time. It'd be great if they weren't on the same day. I don't, I hope that that can happen just because of our size and distance and everything that's already been described. I know one of the big issues with locating graduations, some schools, you know, they just can't afford to graduate from WAC. It's a great venue, but it just doesn't fit, you know, with the school's culture and what they have available. So there was a time, actually Vanguard had their graduation at Booster in May of 2020 during COVID. So everyone could be all spread out. And we were so fortunate that year because there was a cool breeze blowing, and every single graduation after that was hotter than blazes. But Vanguard was beautiful at Booster. And I love being outside, and I love the idea of graduations being held outside. However, you have to have, we were talking about contingency plans earlier, you do have to have a Plan B because we always had our graduations at North Marion High in the morning until that one year when a thunderstorm was coming through. And where are we going to put the people? And having closed-circuit TV and the big punt, it's a lot to manage. So I would love at some point to see more opportunity for a covered space where we could just hold pretty much all of our graduations. That certainly would help solve our problem. But until that time, I think, you know, other board members have mentioned it, you know, we want to honor everybody's needs and desires and figure out a way not to disappoint anybody. So we'll just keep aspiring to that, I guess, as we move along. I wanted to just give some thanks to Arnett House. I visited there for the first time in a while recently. And they have been the alternative to several students in truant attendance situations. Instead of going to juvenile detention, they have gone to Arnett House. And they are being very successful. And it was kind of interesting yet sad that there were quite a few students that were there that not only did I recognize them, but they recognized me from truancy court. So our chronic attendance, lack of attendance challenge is not yet solved, and it may never be completely. But we're certainly on the right track to decreasing those numbers. And it makes me think about it, you know, with mental health and reasons why kids... And it makes me think about it, you know, with mental health and reasons why kids become chronically absent. We have so much to celebrate at this time of year, but we also have more work to do to make sure that more and more students are on the celebration side when it comes to being a senior, and that they get there in the right amount of time, and they have their credits. So, I just wanted to thank our community partners. We had NAMI here tonight, and our Net House, and there are multiple others that are doing a lot to try to help support our students and prevent the final stop being in juvenile detention, so thank you for that. Had the honor and the pleasure of being at Four King Middle School this past week for their concert band performance, which was supposed to be held out on the lawn, but again, the weather got a little uncertain, and so they had it in the gym. But the gym has been refurbished, it looks great. That was a packed house of families. And I just, I emailed Mr. Eason, the teacher, the band teacher, because it was spectacular. It was absolutely spectacular. The young players were right there with the older, more advanced players, and they played everything from Amazing Grace to Be Happy. I just couldn't believe the variety, and there's over 165, I think, sixth graders coming in next year that Mr. Eason plans to welcome, and he's sad to see the other ones go, but when I was at the SAC meeting for Vanguard, I was sharing that, because they were talking about their band concert. And I said, well, you've got some great kids, you know, coming up as freshmen to incorporate. So, it's just really fun to witness the progression of kids and availing themselves of all these programs that we do have. It was also mentioned, and this is just a shout out to our Future Educator Academy, a shout out to all the pipelines that have been put into place under your leadership, Dr. Goett, there is a bus driver that is going to be a science teacher at Vanguard next year. So, when you think about the opportunities that we have at Marion County Public Schools with our community partners, looking at the Public Education Foundation, and all of the opportunities there really are for people to learn and grow and progress, and make a lifetime career doing so many different things, and coming up, you know, from a classroom assistant, there's just, it's amazing to me, everything that we're offering, and also coming up with ways to where it doesn't break your personal bank to make it happen, because that always wasn't the case, like doing the internships and us paying for that, that kind of thing. So, really, really neat. In the midst of testing and celebrations, the Black Stallion Reading Project is doing their farm visits. There are horses visiting schools through the Ocala Horse Alliance, continuing to help kids understand that you can get a job in the horse industry, and if you love horses, great, but if you like to design the clothes that the horses wear, and that the people wear, and that you wear to the Kentucky Derby and all the parties, there is a huge opportunity just in that space of the world of equine. We have a local contractor that was mentioned at a school I was at recently, Big D Roofing, apparently doing a great job collaborating with the school and making sure that there's as little disruption as possible. Big D has been a name in this community forever, and I just thought that that was, you know, really neat, that we have people that care so much about making school where the kids aren't interrupted, and we're making sure that they're making sure that the flow continues. It's those kinds of partnerships that elevate this community, the kids witness it, like you were saying, and that, to me, is what it takes to make a successful school district. I guess, there's so many more things I will say. The last two I will say is that I'm so looking forward to the We the People simulated congressional hearings coming up. That will take place on Thursday, May 22nd, at our courthouse. College Park Elementary, Maplewood Elementary, Oakcrest Elementary, Saddlewood Elementary, and South of Cala Elementary are all participating. It is a curriculum they follow called We the People, the Citizen, and the Constitution, and those simulated congressional hearings. I mean, the kids really do get grilled a little bit.
They do.
And it is really amazing to witness their poise, their knowledge of the Constitution at such a young age, all about voting rights, it's just really amazing, and that was something that might have gone by the wayside during COVID, because it is so interactive, and people weren't close at that point and couldn't be. But it was important enough to resurrect and get it going, and we have, so that continues. Let's see, I think that pretty much covers everything on my list. The final thing, I just wanted, Attorney Powers, I wanted to thank you for providing the timeline for the one mil of when we need to start talking about that again, and I'm also conscious of the timeline for when we need to start talking about impact fees again, whether we're going to look at renewing them, what we're going to be asking for. The Venech study seemed like it took a really long time to get back, because it hadn't been done in a really long time, so hopefully, it won't take as long for them to update the information. But just in visualizing that we'll likely need to take, you know, all of the other steps again to prove extraordinary circumstances, unless things change at the state level. And my personal goal is to avoid, you know, the agonizingly difficult and delayed process that we experienced previously. You know, we see that county continuing to grow and develop in the city, so I just want to make sure that the community knows that at least this board member sees the continued need, and that we want to be on top of it, so that it happens in a timely manner and goes just a lot more smoothly. So, with that, I'll say continue to rock on, everybody, and we're really in the home stretch now. That's all I have.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. Tried to not belabor some of these, because everybody's already touched on so many of the things, so I'll just go quickly. Thank you again, Sean Martin, for being here. Super grateful for your input and looking forward to watching you do amazing things at the Naval Academy in Annapolis, playing football for Navy, and he's heading off in July, so congratulations again. Also, wanting to thank Mr. Lilac from NAMI for being here and highlighting, I've been squeezing on this world-shaped...
How's the love you have, actually?
I know, stress ball, it's been great. Also, we've already touched on graduations. I too have been a board member who's tried to attend every single graduation since I was elected, when they don't conflict with others, and I know that Ms. Slaughter was careful with her words this evening. If Forrest and Vanguard were scheduled on the same night next year, she would be one of those parents that would be involved in that scenario, and so I'm certain that she's hearing it now from people. We would have been hearing it all year long if we had scheduled it that way next year, so let's just not, and we'll be in a better situation. Same thing with baccalaurates. Right, same thing with baccalaurate, anything scheduled on a school board meeting night. I think challenges, additionally with work session days, there are lots of things that schools plan, that they want us to be there, and they've planned them, so I think some of that is normalizing principals using the district-wide calendar. And I don't know how we do that, but that trickle-down of normalizing that, I think will help some of that, because I did look, it's on the district-wide calendar, so hopefully that can happen in the future. Congratulations again to Mr. Tucker, grateful to have you representing Marion County. Another board member mentioned ODP savings. I'm looking forward to ODP savings on our Osceola plan as well, looking forward to that. I think you all got the email today from Dr. Danielle Thomas. Do you get those? Okay, so Florida House did vote to extend session to June 30th. Senate has not done the same thing, so right now, Senate still says that session will, complete session by June 6th. Not sure what that's going to look like, because they're not close on the budget yet. Fortunately, the educational items in the budget are pretty close, but there's still some things we're waiting on. In that Gray Robinson report we received today, just in case you hadn't seen it, there are a couple of bills that did pass that I wanted to highlight very briefly. They are waiting on the governor's signature, so if, in fact, the governor does sign them, they will become law. One of them is CSCS SB 268. This bill would exempt from public records, copying and inspection requirements of school board members and superintendents' home addresses, telephone numbers, as well as our spouses' children, names and home addresses, telephone numbers, dates of birth of any minor children, as well as the school facility or daycare they attend. I know that's something that was interesting for a couple of us this past year, and so our legislators heard our challenges and have now written into law, and included superintendents and school board members, and the hope is that the governor will sign that. But that was there. Tonight, we approved the high school CCC rezoning. We didn't have anyone in the public hearing come and speak out about that. I'm certain whenever we really start getting serious about that school ready to go, we'll hear lots of people, but tonight, we didn't, so just making everyone aware that we did approve that tonight. Also, wanted to say thanks to our team members, as well as board members who participated in yesterday's Central Florida Public School Boards Coalition meeting. We were able to hear from Osceola School District's Chief Facilities Director and Chief Financial Officer, and received lots of wonderful information, and oh, what a blessing it is that they have not only the half-cent sales tax in Osceola County that our voters also just approved here in Marion, they also have a countywide one-cent sales tax that their county shares a quarter of that with their school district, and their impact fee calculation, they received 100% of their impact fees. So, when they're talking about facilities, their plans, they have a lot more money than we do, and just looking forward to the day Marion County can look that way as well. Two last things. I was leaving the City of Ocala Planning and Zoning Commission meeting last night. We also had something come before us about the Winding Oaks property. Actually, had a land use attorney stop me on the way out the door, and just for your information, board, explain that he believed that our impact fees on apartments were far off, and we were not anywhere near what it should be. Tried to explain that we had a lot of deliberations on our impact fee calculations, and specifically with the city, as we were leaving the City of Ocala Planning and Zoning, about those different categories. I don't believe that whenever our local municipalities ask for us to recalculate specifically for multifamily units, that they really understood exactly how many students live in multifamily units, and I assure you, the numbers are accurate. And so, if there's any question out there, I didn't have the opportunity to share with him last evening, but any question that our numbers aren't accurate, I can assure you they are. But I don't think that the folks that asked us to do those calculations were prepared for the numbers, so that's kind of where we are. But since it was mentioned about impact fees currently, there is also a bill that has been passed through both chambers waiting the governor's signature, CSSB 108, that will change extraordinary circumstances, and will mean that they will require a unanimous vote, and some other challenges that will impact how we move forward with changing our impact fees. So, I know that if the governor does sign that, that's something that we'll be on top of, and just await further direction on what's next. And in the spirit of what everybody else has said, we're in a season of award celebrations and baccalaurates and graduations, and as a parent of a graduate myself, I'm feeling all the things, and just grateful for the education that my senior has received in Marion County Public Schools, and all the many teachers, coaches, and administrators that have touched him along the way, and fellow graduates all throughout 2025, the class of 2025. We've done some great things, and we have a lot of great students that we're about to put out into the workforce, into higher education, into the military, and into their entrepreneurship careers. So, with that, congratulations in advance to the class of 2025.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Okay, I'm going to go quick, because I have several of the same things to share, so, going to go quick. I did want to share that last Friday, we were able to celebrate some of our youngest graduates at Howard Academy for their hippie graduation, and it sure did fill my cup. And so, I want to share quickly and briefly a sweet story about a young kindergartner who has a hearing disability, and so, because we have that in common, he had very cool hearing aids, that he looked like a superstar, and I got the chance to visit with his mom, and it just made me so grateful, as the mom was talking to me about the accommodations that his classroom teacher makes for his instruction every single day, and so, that happens all the time, I don't always have the opportunity to share it, but the work that our teachers and our schools do to make sure that our kids have what they need, even when it's something exemplary, you know, that they make it happen, and so, her son is just having extraordinary growth, because that teacher is willing to make the accommodation. So, I just want to say it was a phenomenal and fun event, and look forward to what those littles are going to do in the next couple of years, you know, as they move on their educational journey. The next couple of weeks, we do have, actually, next week, we have several Black Stallion events, and they are going to be all over Marion County, so I am hopeful that I'll be able to catch a few of those, because really grateful for that program and the work that they're doing on our school campuses and with our students. We do have next Wednesday Hillcrest graduation, which I know is close to all of our hearts. We enjoy that every single year, looking forward to that, and we also have, I think, a teacher surprise that same day, so very busy. Ms. Thrower, I too am looking forward to We the People, it's one of my favorite events, you know, at this time of year, so I'm looking forward to that. Just thinking about our seniors as they graduate, I know everybody's touched on this. Celebrate, have fun, do what you need to do, get, you know, finish up whatever you need to have done, but please be careful. Sometimes this time of year, we see tragedy here in Marion County, and so, that's just a little heavy on my heart right now. I want to make sure everybody is having a good time, but doing it safely. So, share that with your friends, share that with your circle of people, have fun and celebrate, but do it safely, because we want to celebrate with you. And we also have another group, we have some teachers that are retiring very soon, so they are celebrating also, and so I know that Ms. Magamal sent out an invitation, and we discussed it at our last meeting. If, Board, I just wanted to remind you to please let her know if you are able to attend. Looking forward to celebrating all that are moving on to the next phase on their journey. So, Board, thank you for all of your conversation and comments this evening, and if there is no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Thank you, Board Member Thrower and Dr. Campbell, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Any opposed? All right, motion passes, and this meeting is adjourned at 7:42. Thank you, Board.